Okay. So, I will convene the regular meeting of the Oregon City Commission for Wednesday, April 5th, 2017. I call the roll, please.
Commissioner Eide, here. Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg, here. Commissioner O'Donnell is absent this evening. Mayor Holliday?
Here. So, please stand and join me in the flag salute.
(inaudible) flag of the United States of America. And here we have one which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as we move down the agenda, ceremonies, proclamations, and presentations, I have a proclamation for Oregon City Arbor Day 2017. Ms. Turway.
Oh, thank you very much. We are a Tree, we are designated as a Tree City USA. This year is our fifth year with the designation. Part of that entails a proclamation. So, we have a proclamation prepared for you today. Also, it includes, or a note to Oregon City Enhancement Day, which includes Arbor Day and Earth Day together. We're celebrating them as one event at the city. So, on April 29th, we'll see you at Wesley Lynn Park from 9:00 to noon.
Can we get this cool thing, too? I gotta put it frontwards there. Okay.
Nice.
So, I will, I will read the proclamation. Oh, what's, oh, that's the other thing. Okay.
Should've been right behind the engine.
This is all the other thing?
Yes.
Not the Tree City thing?
Correct.
Oh. Usually, it's in one of these things. That's what confused me. You keep doing that to me. So, Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees; and whereas the holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska; and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world; and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife; and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products; and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business area, and beautify our community; and whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal; and whereas the city and our Arbor Day partners Fred Meyer, Buell's Impressions, Oregon City Garbage Company, Friends of Trees, Oregon City Community Trees, Oregon Community Trees, sorry, and Oregon Department of Forestry work together throughout the year to plant trees and educate the community about the importance of urban forestry; and whereas in 2017, Oregon City will celebrate its fifth year as Tree City USA. Now, therefore, I, Dan Holliday, Mayor of Oregon City, do proclaim April 29th, 2017 as Arbor Day in Oregon City, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to plant and care for trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations. And witness hereof, I have here and to set my hand this fifth day of April 2017. Was there somebody from the organization that wanted to say something? Okay. All right. So, I have another award to present. At my State of the City address, we kinda shifted it around so the Employee and Citizen of the Year were shifted to my State of the City address. Unfortunately, the recipient was unable to attend, so I'm going to present that tonight. And, once again, I didn't have a whole lot of personal dealings with this gentleman, but Mr. Conkle did, so I will first announce that the 2016 Citizen of the Year is to Mr. Charles Kidwell, who was most recently the Chair of our Planning Commission. And, Mr. Conkle, would you like to say a few words, please?
Certainly. Charles has lived in Oregon City for over 30 years, raising his family here, and his children and grandchildren still call Oregon City home. Charles had an interest in where and how our community would grow, and decided to volunteer his time as a community member and expertise as an architect to serve on the Oregon City Planning Commission, to which he was first appointed in April of 2010, and recently completed his second and final term at the end of 2016 as the Chair of the Planning Commission. Charles has an impressive professional resume as a project architect, responsible for the programming, design, development, and quality control of a wide variety of small and large projects, including the Washington Zoo, the Oregon National Guard Master Plans, Providence Willamette Falls Hospital expansions, correctional facilities, and numerous private residential, commercial, and mixed-use buildings. As a member of the Planning Commission, Charles has reviewed, scrutinized, questioned, and helped shape our community. He has been involved with large and small decisions, including several master plans, annexations, concept plans, the Cove and Willamette Falls Legacy Project, to name a few. His decades of experience as an architect, working for both public and private clients, brought a great perspective to the Planning Commission. He was able to not only understand the intent of a piece of legislation, but he was able to articulate how that would be designed and constructed. He provided a rationale and reasonable balance between public and private interests when interpreting and improving development applications. As the Chair of the Planning Commission, Charles was always prepared, thoughtful in his deliberation, insightful in his comments, and respectful and considerate to his fellow commissioners, citizens, and community members. He led by example and gracefully dealt with many contentious issues, always allowing time for concerns to be raised. He actively listened to the issues brought forward and was always looking for better ways to address what he was hearing. I had the pleasure to work with Charles for many years, and I'm grateful for the experience and leadership that he brought to me, city staff, the Planning Commission, and the community. Volunteering for the Planning Commission is a huge commitment for a citizen to make, and Charles not only volunteered, but led by example with integrity, thoughtfulness, and a true desire to make Oregon City a better place for all of us. So, congratulations, Charles, and thank you very much.
Charles, come on. So, I wanted to say that of all of the jobs that our volunteers do, the Planning Commission is probably the most technical and brutal and time-consuming of all of them, and I have a deep respect for all of the folks who serve on the Planning Commission, and I especially wanted to thank you, Charles. Do you want to say something?
I'm very humbled by this, and frankly, I didn't feel like I deserved any special recognition. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I disagree with you there.
Yeah, you too.
So, now, I have the filling of a couple of appointments. I'm gonna appoint Vern Johnson to the Planning Commission for a four-year term ending December 31st, 2020, and appointing Joyce Gifford as the primary representative, and Roy Harris as the alternate for the Hillendale Neighborhood Association to serve on the Citizen Involvement Committee with the term ending December 31st, 2017. And the last thing we have on the agenda is back over here. Here we go. So, we got a letter from the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards, and they let us know that, and this was in February, middle of February, that Paige Olson of Oregon City was named one of the top youth volunteers in Oregon for 2017 in the 22nd Annual Prudential Spirit of Community Awards. More than 31,000 young people across the country participated in this year's program. So, we decided we would put together something in honor of Paige, and I assume Paige and her family are here?
Yes.
Okay. So, I will, I will read this statement of commendation. Recognize Paige Olson as an honoree in the Prudential Spirit of Community Award. However effective government may be in serving the needs of its citizens, the soul of our city and its vitality as a place to live and work depend on the relationship of families, friends, and neighbors. Strengthening those bonds is not as much in the hands of institutions or government as it is in the hearts of the people. Individuals who volunteer to help people of all ages, races, and religions cope with illnesses, overcome hardships and barriers, adjust to social changes, and fulfill their potential, these volunteers are the unrecognized unsung heroes of our society. Paige Olson, recently named as one of our state's top honorees in the 2017 Prudential Spirit of Community Awards program, exemplifies the value of volunteer community service and is a role model to other youth as well as adults in our community. A surprising number of volunteers in communities across the nation are like Paige, a student contributing time without expectation of reward, other than the gratification that comes from helping others. Some of these young people work in established groups, others seek new and unique ways to help others on their own. Recognizing these young volunteers and encouraging others to follow their example is the aim of this nationwide program conducted by Prudential Financial and the National Association of Secondary School Principals. Its aim is to reach into every community in all 50 states and the District of Columbia to identify and honor these unsung heroes locally, state by state, and then nationally, in the hopes that their recognition will serve to stimulate other volunteer service. As Mayor of Oregon City and on behalf of our city, I commend Paige to our Prudential Spirit of Community Awards honoree for her outstanding volunteer contribution to others and our community. And, we're all gonna sign this one. We'll have to get a new copy. So, send that down the line. I'll sign this one. Tony, you wanna sign this? So, Paige, we will get you a copy of this once there are a couple of minor scribblers errors that are taken care of. But, if you'll come up now, we do have something to give you. Now. Why isn't that working? I still can't hear. So, in our certificate of appreciation for Oregon City, congratulations.
(laughter) All right. So, I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about the service work that I did. My name is Paige Olson, if you guys didn't catch that. Currently, I am a senior at Clackamas Middle College and a sophomore at Clackamas Community College. I was very excited to receive this award, but before getting nominated for this one, I was working towards another award, and that award was a Girl Scout Gold Award. So, I've been involved with Girl Scouts for about nine years now, and with Girl Scouts, there are several different awards that you can earn, the highest being the Gold Award. Now, for the Gold Award, it takes about 80 hours of service, well, a minimum of 80 hours of service, a project designed and led by the girl, and approval from the Girl Scout Council. When I was in the eighth grade, I was volunteering at a local food pantry in Oregon City when I found out that feminine hygiene products are not on SNAP benefits. And while they are on WIC, however, it's only applicable to new mothers or women who are pregnant. So, I, with further investigation into that issue, I found out that women, to manage their periods, homeless women and in need, had to crumple up newspaper or use diapers, which are at food pantries. And for anyone who has had a period or can imagine, that is a horrible thing. So, I chose to use my Gold Award to raise awareness about the need for feminine hygiene products in homeless shelters and in food pantries while collecting and donating these products. So, I used my resources in Oregon City, at my school, and through Girl Scouts to get volunteers who created donation boxes to put in appropriate facilities and women's restrooms. After that, I had a volunteer check the boxes for the donated products, and then from there, they put them to the local homeless shelters or food pantries. Throughout the project, I spoke at various events, Chamber of Commerce, to food pantries, stuff like that, to volunteers there, and I was getting a lot of positive feedback through my Facebook page and through the places I was speaking at. Because of that, I got nominated for another award, which is Amazing Kid of Oregon City. And with that came a banquet at Omsi and a $200 gift card to Fred Meyer's. So, I chose to use that gift card to purchase feminine hygiene products. And with that, I donated to all the places in Oregon City that needed them. It was honestly probably one of my most favorite memories volunteering, because just seeing the looks of the volunteers, like, no one ever thinks to, like, to give these things, and they were just so incredibly thankful. In wrapping up, volunteering has been a huge aspect of my life. Some of my fondest memories are at the food bank volunteering, and I was a big fan of the hairnets, just being honest. But, and I also volunteered at the soup kitchen and played piano there for the homeless people, and that was a great experience. I think that volunteering needs to be incorporated into our daily lives as people of Oregon City. And, of course, I'm going to encourage you guys to go out and purchase some feminine hygiene products to donate, but ultimately, no matter what you do to volunteer, you're furthering our community and making Oregon City more of a family.
Paige, Paige, hang on. Paige, hang on. We wanted to get the parents to come up and get a picture with Paige for us. Well, family, let's say, since apparently there is a sister back there. Thank you. Okay, well, now that the fun stuff's out of the way, we'll move on to citizen comments. And, I'll just read this again. Citizens are allowed three minutes to present information relevant to the city but not listed as an item on the agenda. Prior to speaking, citizens should complete a comment form delivered to the city recorder. Commission does not generally engage in dialogue with those making comments, but may refer the issue to city manager. Complaints shall first be addressed at department level prior to addressing the city commission. Do we have any citizen comments? We apparently do. Okay, so, Mr. Cross and Mr. Morrow. So, name and city of residence for the record, please.
J. Cross, Eagle Creek.
Just go ahead.
Oh, okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, thank you for this opportunity to speak in front of you today. I wanted to announce to you today that I am going to, I'm running for the Clackamas Fire District Number One, Board of Directors Position Number Four, for the special district election that's coming up on May 16th. I was a member of the Boring Fire District Board for the last four years, and I was one of the driving forces behind the Contract for Services Agreement between Boring Fire District and Clackamas Fire, and then ultimately, the legal consolidation and annexation of the Boring Fire District and the dissolution of Boring Fire District after that was all over. I had a wonderful experience working with Clackamas Fire's Board of Directors, the Chief Charlton and his staff, they're a wonderful group of people, highly professional, the Boring, I'm sorry, the Clackamas Fire District is a highly professional organization, and I'd wanna be part of that organization and continue on some of the work that we were working on together during the, all of the negotiations and stuff that went on during the merger. I have over 30 years' experience in the public safety arena, in emergency services, and so I understand the needs of public service in general, or the fire department specifically, and so, it's kind of a great fit for me to be able to work with both administrative staff and work with Board of Directors. Hope to continue on as Clackamas County continues to grow, and obviously, we know we have a significant influx of people into our communities now, all over, that I wanna help the fire district with clear and concise policymaking and continue working on our service delivery that we have out here as, as our needs change into the future. So, that's what I'm all about, and I wanna thank you once again for your time and allowing me to speak at your meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Morrow, 13581 Southeast Callahan Road, Happy Valley. I'm here also running, I happen to be running against Mr. Cross. I was also almost running against Mr. Gifford, who's in the back there. There was, at one time, five of us running for this position, but it's down to four. Very popular position. I'm here to promise you that I will represent the whole district. It's a huge district. It goes from past your borders to the south, clear out past Boring. It practically is like running for a county commissioner position. So, my plan is to represent the whole district. I've been trying to get around to as much of the district as I can, find out what their issues are. As you know, I've been very active in the community for a number of years. I know many of you from being on the Happy Valley City Council. I've also been on West Committees, NCPRD, I was chairman at one time, North Clackamas Urban Watershed Council, Clackamas River Basin Council, Sunrise Water District Board. Obviously, I was on the Happy Valley, or, excuse me, not Board, but Sunrise Water Budget Committee, and I was on the Happy Valley Budget Committee. So, I'm familiar with budgets. I was on the Board of Directors for Parry Creek Child and Family Services and for the Boy Scouts. I've worked for a nonprofit agency for the past 15 years, so I know how to get blood out of a turnip. And, in addition to that, I worked EMS for 30 years, so I have that familiarity, too. As you know, I've been down to State Capitol and into Washington, DC, to promote things for this district and for this region. So, I feel I have a lot to offer the citizens of this fire district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gifford.
What do you mean? No, she's-
It's a clean slate!
If you're up there, if you're up there, I want a fresh battery.
Oh, no!
We want a backup.
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. I had a couple of kudos that I wanted to give. Last night was Oregon's, was the Hillendale Neighborhood Association and the Tower Vista Neighborhood Association joint meeting, and we had some, some really quality presentations. John Lewis really did a bang-up job explaining what all has been going on, and bang-up, bang-up job. And I have to say, I complained about a particular pothole, and today, coming down here, it's already fixed. The guy is amazing. And also, the-
Well, it's not like he actually fills the pothole, I'm just saying.
No, no, I seen him out there with a shovel.
What?
You might've seen him leaning on a shovel.
Apparently, there's a new policy that, in addition to the, to the neighborhood liaison, the police officers, there's also gonna be the traffic guys, they're gonna be appearing at the neighborhood associations, which is very cool, and I'm sorry, I don't, didn't exactly understand his name, Officer Fritsch, Fitch?
Fetzer?
Fetzer, yes. Officer Fetzer was there, and I've seen him twice today, stopping a couple of cars, so I'm, I'm telling you, we got a, we got a traffic division that is on high alert, so everybody better watch out. They're out there saving lives, and I was impressed with his comment that their goal is never to issue a citation. That would be nice. That would be nice. Doesn't always work out, but it's a nice goal. It's a nice goal. Seems like there were some other things, but I did wanna point out that the OCBA, on their monthly meeting this month, that'll be April 25th, 'cause we always meet on the fourth Tuesday, is going to be a representative from workforce, Clackamas, Clackamas Workforce?
Clackamas Workforce Partnership.
Clackamas Workforce Partnership, thank you.
That's right.
Betsy Daisy? No, Daisy?
Bridgette Daisy.
Bridgette Daisy. Bridgette Daisy will be our speaker.
Why don't you just do a testimony for us?
Would you like to do that for us? And, the idea is talking about the importance of education as it pertains to employment. So, should be a very good presentation, looking forward to that. That's on Tuesday, the 25th, at 11:30, down at the Abernathy Center.
Is that it?
How much time do I have?
You're done.
No, it's all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, William.
Is that it? Nobody else? Okay.
Oh, wait.
Oh, hold on. Oh, okay. So, we'll move on to public hearings. This is PC 17-038, AN 16-004/ZZ 16-0001, the annexation and zone change of 35.65 acres north of Holcomb Boulevard. Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. We're gonna start with a legal reading from our city attorney, Bill Kabeisman.
A public hearing on a land use matter is scheduled for tonight. A staff report was prepared and made available to the public seven days before tonight's hearing. Staff report identified the approval criteria that apply to the annexation proposal. Staff analyzed the criteria, criteria along with written comments and input received through the public notification process. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow tonight is set out in state law and Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedures are shown in the chart on, to my right here. In this matter, the Planning Commission has recommended approval of these applications, and the matter is now before the city commission for final consideration. The city commission review in this matter is on the record, and that means that there's no new evidence this evening. People can present and make arguments, but no new traffic studies or new evidence come, you know, that type of material come in. Anyone who wishes to speak to this matter should fill out a speaker card that are located in the back corner of the room and give it to the city recorder up here, Ms. Riggs, and speakers will proceed in the order in which the cards are received. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name and whether you reside or have a business in the city. Argument should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. Again, no new evidence. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, please identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they've applied to the application under consideration. Person may submit written material while the record is open, so long as it contains no new evidence. Any written materials mailed to the city staff during the time when the record was open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If the city commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue you may wish to appeal must been raised before the commission for them to consider. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond to, the issue will not be judged appealable to the state Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue will preclude an action for damages in circuit court. With that, does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare? Has any commissioner visited the site?
I have.
Sorry? So, visited?
Visited.
Okay. Anybody from the audience wish to question any commissioner about any of those matters, conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contacts? Okay, seeing none, we'll now continue with the planning staff report and then open the testimony to the public.
Thank you very much. The city's application for a annexation as well as a zone change for a little more than 35 acres north of Holcomb Boulevard. The annexation is for the entire property. The zone change would be from the existing county zoning designation, the city zoning designation, which is R10. It's a single-family residential. It's a 10,000 square foot minimum, which is our biggest lot within the city. A staff report has been provided in the packet, which includes findings for the commission. This matter was before the planning commission, as previously identified. They did recommend approval on the matter. So, a summary of the property has shown on the screen. It's been in the urban growth boundary for quite some time, since 1979. It's still within the county zoning, it's still within the county, so it has a county zoning designation, which is FU10, which is a 10-acre minimum, so very big zoning designation. With the zone change that they applied for, it's, again, the least zents zone in the city. We'll talk about it in a bit more detail, but our code requires us to apply the annex, or to apply the zone change without discretion when we have an annexation, when we have a city zone. So, we'll get into a bit more detail about the criteria in a minute. The applicant has not proposed any development at this time. There's no land division or anything like that. It's just changing from the county to the city and changing to the city zoning designation. This area is important to note that it's not within the Park Place Concept Plan. That concept plan is south of Holcomb, so this is a little bit different than other That concept plan is south of Holcomb, so this is a little bit different than other ones you may see in the future. There's a variety of approval criteria that apply. We'll talk about annexation factors as one of them. So, in addition to complying with Metro Code and other requirements, we have these factors. And so, it's the job of the city commission to find a positive balance of these factors. I'm not going to go through them one by one, because you've read them in the staff report, but they're pretty broad, and there's findings for demonstrating compliance with all those factors in the recommended findings. The zone change criteria, again, our code requires us to automatically apply our city zoning designation upon annexation, so there is no discretion in this. It's required. So, that is why the R-10 zoning designation, zone change, has been applied for. When we did the analysis, we look at a variety of factors and adequacy of facilities. One thing that we did want to note is transportation. The applicant did a transportation study. It assumed a level of development of the property for the 121 homes, although they're not applying for the 121 homes. We're just looking at the net difference in transportation impact from the current zoning designation, which is 10-acre minimums, to our 10 zoning designation. When they did that analysis, there were two intersections that failed to meet our mobility standards, and so because of that, the city has worked with the applicant and ODOT, because one of them is an ODOT facility, to come up with a condition. The condition, in short, says, you can keep doing what you're allowed to do today. So, you'll, you can stay with that, the same level of intensity. There's no development that can happen until these transportation system areas are solved. And not only do they have to be solved, so not only does a plan have to happen, but it has to be adopted. And that gets adopted through a legislative process that involves the planning commission, city commission, lots of public input, and includes amending our code as well. So, that's when we can start to look at proportional share of improvements and things like that as well. So, just to be very, very clear, there were lots of meetings about this condition, but the condition says you can change, you can come into the city, you can apply a city zone, but you can't do any development until the problems that we identified are solved. Are there any questions on this condition? No? Okay. The other public facilities, we have master plans for, and there aren't any outstanding issues as there are in the transportation system plan. They've all been updated, and they've all accounted for growth from these properties. So, they assumed development of them when we created the plans. So, with that, we recommend that you accept testimony, but as our city attorney said, accept no new evidence, and then you close the record and make a tentative decision. Then, staff will take that tentative decision and tailor the findings to your decision, and you can continue this matter to April 19th, when you can choose to adopt your decision, whatever that is. If you decide to approve this annexation, we'll also have an associated ordinance for the annexation on that.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, under our rules of procedures, the applicant has 15 minutes. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Commission. My name is Michael Robinson. My mailing address is 1120 Northwest Cooch Street. Cooch is spelled C-O-U-C-H. Sometime, I want an office on Elm Street, and I want it spelled Cooch. 10th floor, Portland, Oregon, 972094128. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, also here tonight on behalf of the applicant are Mike, is Mike Arndt, he's our transportation engineer, Rick Givens, who is our planner, and Mark Handris, who is the applicant. So, Laura did a wonderful job on the staff report before the city commission, as she did before the Oregon City Planning Commission, and as you know, planning commission recommended approval of this application, both applications, as did the staff. I think Laura did such a good job tonight, I can probably say less than I intended to say, which I'm sure would be appreciated by everybody. So, let me, let me sort of summarize why the city commission could find that there's substantial evidence in the whole record that the approval criteria for the annexation and the zoning map amendment have been met. First of all, as Laura said, we have a zoning map application. It's R-10. It's based on Oregon City Municipal Code 1768025A. I'm just going to hold it up. This is a section of your code that links your conference of plan map designations to a zone. This site has a conference of plan map designation of low-density residential, which equates in the code to R-10. As Laura said, it's not discretionary. Your code actually establishes this as the zoning district that must be applied. She's also correct that it's the least dense zone in the city. So, at the planning commission hearing, people obviously were concerned about the density, and I think something the city commission should remember is, this is something the city has already decided by adopting the conference of plan designation on this property of low-density residential. You've already determined what the density will be and how it will be implemented through a particular zoning district. So, that's not really an issue here. What is at issue is making sure that we're doing, we're corresponding the plan map designation the planning commission found that we were, and that's why the city commission can approve the zoning map application. Second application before the city commission is the annexation, and again, Laura did, I think, a very nice job of explaining the approval criteria that apply to annexation. In addition to the Oregon City Municipal Code and the Oregon City Conference of Plan, the record also contains evidence that the application complies with Metro Code 3.09, which governs boundary changes, and Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter 222, which governs annexations. Laura correctly pointed out that the seven factors for annexation in OCMC Chapter 14 are met. By the way, we had five hearings before the planning commission where folks could testify, so there was enormous opportunity for public testimony, and every issue that one could think of was raised. And in the course of the deliberation and the give and take in the public hearing, planning commission determined that those seven factors on balance were satisfied by the application. The other thing that's, I think, important for the city commission to remember is that you have acknowledged plans that govern how your utilities are going to be provided. You have a plan for water, you have a plan for sanitary sewer, and you have standards for grading and stormwater. Your public works and planning department staff testified that all of those plans will assure that adequate public facilities and services are provided at this site. In addition, at the March 13 planning commission hearing, Wes Rogers, who is the Director of Operations for the Oregon City School District, appeared and testified orally and also submitted a letter. And what the school district said with respect to school capacity was, quote, "The district has adequate secondary schools enrollment capacity to accommodate the forecasted middle and high school students generated by this annexation." He also wrote that in 2026-27, assuming 35 new elementary students, Holcomb Elementary would be slightly above capacity at 569. By slightly above capacity, he means five students. So, Mr. Rogers' testimony orally and writing to the planning commission was that the school district has planned for this growth, and as Laura said, it's not going to occur right away. It's probably not going to occur for several years. And so, that gives the school district a chance to catch up with the growth that's occurring in Oregon City. But the evidence before the city commission is that the school district has planned for growth, and they can accommodate the growth in this area. I want to mention two other things. As Laura said, this site has been in the urban growth boundary for 38 years, since 1979. So, it's a site that Metro and the city of Oregon City have long anticipated would be available to meet the city's continuing housing needs. And that's what Section 14 of your Conference of Plan and Urbanization provides for. It explains how you get from raw ground to the kind of housing that the city has determined that it needs so that it can continue to meet its housing obligations under state law. It's very clear that this is an appropriate site for inclusion within the city. The only other thing that I might mention, Mayor, before concluding, is that this is, as Laura said, we're not at a development proposal stage. We need to get into the city. We agree with Condition of Approval 14, and we thought that was a great condition. We worked with city staff and ODOT staff to come up with that condition. Under that condition, as Laura said, no development can be approved until the city's gone through a refinement plan process for its mobility standards for transportation. The other part of that condition is, we have to contribute our fair share to making road improvements. So, the applicant, when it begins to develop process, will do so when the city has different mobility standards, and part of the land division process includes another traffic report. At the end of the day, the applicant will understand what its obligations are to the city for those transportation improvements. So, the evidence supports the finding that the planning commission and the staff have made that the criteria for annexation are approved. We're satisfied with Condition of Approval 14. We think it's an appropriate condition to address transportation. We'd ask Mayor Holliday that the city commission approve this application with the recommended condition, and that you close the public hearing tonight after testimony and then come back in two weeks with proposed findings for adoption as your decision. We thank you for your time tonight. Please ask me, or Mike, or Rick, or Mark if you have any questions that you'd like us to answer.
Okay. We'll do questions at the end, because we'll get another shot at the very end. So, do we have any representatives from any Oregon City-recognized neighborhood groups? None? Okay. Government agencies? Then, we'll take public testimony. Is, do we just have the one?
Yep.
Mr. Van Haverbeek. And Ms. Holden, you might as well just come up.
My name is Steve Van Haverbeek. I'm a resident of Oregon City in the Park Place neighborhood, directly across the street from this new development. I'm very happy to see that this is being considered to come into our city. I know that there's going to be challenges once the development starts. I believe that they will be addressed. Two concerns that I have, the Barlow Trail crosses this property, and I want to make sure that that is recognized and the site corridor is maintained. And I have seen in the past two weeks, there's been a lot of tree cutting in this area prior to the annexation. Not sure whether that has been allowed or has been noted, but the county doesn't currently have its tree ordinance.
That's correct. They did the same thing to the area just east of that. So, they will have all those trees out of there before development starts.
In your opinion?
It looks like.
Ms. Holden.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. I would like to speak in support of this annexation. Currently, Oregon City is behind in the number of lots necessary to support the population growth inside the city. I think that would be very helpful if city staff were to keep the commission informed on the population growth and the number of lots available as we grow. If we're not able to provide housing in adequate numbers, businesses will not be able to have a reason to locate here. One of the things that is really important to business is that there is certainty in the area. Businesses are looking for a place for their employees to live. Commuting is getting to be very difficult for a lot of people, and people want to work and live in close proximity. I would ask that you close the record tonight and make a decision for approval. Oh, one more thing. It occurs to me that oftentimes, we forget, the homes that we live in, they had to have been developed at some point in time. At some point in time, our homes began on land that had to be annexed or had some land use action. And perhaps there was opposition on our homes as well, and we may have inconvenienced other people. But now that we have ours, what do we do about the people that don't have theirs yet? I believe we need to provide for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Last chance, if you in the audience who want to talk. If, when you're done, you'll fill out a form and give it to the city recorder so that we have your information.
Sure.
My name is Mike Solko, and I live on Winston Drive in this area. First of all, I'd like to say a couple of things. One is that, you know, a 20-foot strip, this is regarding annex, or creating an island, you know, a 20-foot strip, I mean, that is not, not, not creating an island by virtue of this application, this annexation. This is creating an island, and you're affecting people that are not currently in the city. The, if you look at that 20-foot strip, I'm right now, it's just a grass, you know, a piece of grass going there with a couple of cars parked on it, and that's about it. That is not, not, not creating an island. Secondly, the applicant had previously stated that, yeah, this area's been in the urban growth boundary since 7079, or whenever that was. Yeah, that's true, but just because it is, doesn't mean that annexation has to occur at this particular time, given the, yeah, it's showing up there, given the traffic problems that are acknowledged in this area, currently acknowledged, or currently occurring in this area. So, you know, get your ducks in line. First, get the traffic problem solved, and then, you know, consider the annexation. And then, last of all, I guess, I hope you all read what was presented at the various public hearings before the planning commission, and don't take the lack of comments tonight as being a lack of concern from the area. At that, at the planning commission hearings, there was only one comment submitted, or one piece of testimony from a person supporting the annexation, and that was from an organization to which the applicant is a member. Everybody else totally opposition to the, to the annexation. And if that doesn't say something, raise some red flags for you folks. That should be it. If you're really serious about public participation, public involvement in the community, and everybody there is against it, except for maybe the two people that just presented here tonight, that should raise some really big red flags to you. It really should. And other than that, again, read the previous testimony, you know, maybe even keep this open until the 19th, as was presented there, so more people can consider this again. That's all. Thank you.
Last chance. Anybody else? Okay, then we have one more from the rebuttal from the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor Holliday. Mike Robinson, on behalf of the applicant, we appreciate the fact that folks have come out and talked to us, and we like to hear the testimony. It gives us a chance to answer the questions they've asked. So, Mr. Van Haverbeek's testimony regarded preservation of the Barlow Trail. That issue was raised before your planning commission. We recognize our obligation under the land division approval criteria to preserve that corridor, and we said on the record to the planning commission that when we submit a land division application, we will do so. So, that's clear to us, and it's on the record that the applicant understands its legal obligations.
So, just a quick question on that. So, are there any actual existing remnants of the Barlow Trail on the property?
I do not know. I've not been on the property to look for them. But if there are, your code requires their preservation in a tract, and we will accomplish that.
Okay.
With respect to tree cutting, that was discussed a lot at the planning commission, but as the city commission knows, this property's in Clackamas County. It's in agricultural use. The county does not prohibit tree cutting, and so, it's not, and furthermore, it's not relevant to the approval criteria. We appreciate Ms. Holden's testimony. I think she said the right thing. Cities have a legal obligation under Oregon law to provide enough housing for a 20-year supply. It's easy to say, "Don't annex," but the reality is, if you don't annex, it causes hardship for families that want a home. It gets too expensive. And so, the ideal goal is to balance, balance the right amount of housing, and that's what your 20-year land supply, which is embedded in your conference of plan, does. We appreciate Mr. Solko's testimony. The 20-foot strip is not an island. In order to be an island, it has to be completely surrounded by city. That's not the case after this annexation. The 20-foot strip he refers to remains connected to the county. But even if it were an island, neither your code nor state law prohibits creation of island. But I want to be clear, factually, there is no island created by this annexation. Mr. Solko suggested, just because it's been in the UGB Mr. Selko suggested, just because it's been in the UGB for a mere 38 years, you don't have to annex. The reality is, to accomplish your plan, you do have to annex. And if I could, Mayor, I just want to read a couple of sentences from Section 14, Urbanization of the Conference of Plans. It says, "This section is intended to show compliance with statewide planning Goal 14. Goal 14 requires cities to estimate future growth and the need for land, and to zone enough land to meet that need. The goal calls for each city to establish an urban growth boundary, identify and separate urbanizable land from rural land." And if you went on and read the other sections in the plan, what it says in whole is, in order to develop, you have to be in the city because you can't get services. And so, if you stop annexation, you stop the opportunity for growth that is mandated by your plan. And just a reminder, we're not talking about amending a conference plan or doing something that this city hasn't anticipated, literally, for years. The other thing, and I appreciate what Mr. Selko had to say about only one supporter. I hardly ever go to a hearing where anyone's supporting me except the person that I'm representing, so not, not news for that. But I also want to say this, it's not a popularity contest. You're obligated, and I know you do this because I watch you do your hearings, you apply the law and you demand that the applicant meet its burden of proof. That's the test. So, it doesn't matter if there's 1,000 people against an application. What matters is, has the applicant met its burden of proof to show by substantial evidence that the law is satisfied? Your staff found we did, the planning commission found we did, and you can find that we do. So, for those reasons, we'd ask that you close the public hearing, close the record, tentatively approve the application, and come back in two weeks and adopt a decision. We appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. So, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we can debate.
Mayor, before the debate starts?
Mr. Geisman.
I apologize. I do want to bring up one thing that was discussed at length before the planning commission has come up before this, this commission as well, and that's Senate Bill 1573. The proposal would be that this annexation with your approval would be approved according to that requirement. So, just wanted to make sure you're aware of 1573 also applies here.
And Senate Bill 1573 is no longer a bill, but the law of land, correct?
You're correct, yes. Hasn't been codified, but it is.
Who wants to go first?
I seem to go first all the time. Maybe you two would like to. But I can, I guess, here, so.
No, I'll twist your arm there.
Yeah, no. You want to do it, Ron? Here you go.
I'd be happy to go first. I think Oregon City needs a variety of housing choices. I like the idea that these are larger lots, 10-acre, 10,000-square-foot lots. We tend to have a lot of smaller lots in this city, so I think there'd be a lot of demand for larger lots. It is an interesting traffic challenge, so I'm encouraged that the city staff has developed a solution that the developer's happy with, that will ensure that there is adequate transportation capacity and developer participation in that solution. And I'm also persuaded by the support of the school district and the various service districts. There's no reason from a service provision standpoint to deny the application, so I'd be in support.
Commissioner I.
I have a question first.
Sure.
I guess of staff. Is there any road access from the property to Forsyth Road? Or is there a plan to create, to build a road? I was just, go ahead.
No. The developer will lay out the roadway systems when they do development. So, if they were to come in with a subdivision, they'll have to show connectivity, but there is not a road identified in the transportation system plan at a collector or higher level.
Okay. I was just curious more than anything, because so many of the comments from citizens were related to transportation and traffic. So, I was just wondering about that. But I live in Park Place. I live across the street from this development.
Proposed development. It's not even a proposed development.
That's right. All right, let me, let me rephrase that. I live across the street from, from the land that is proposed to be annexed. And I have lived there for 11 years, and I just wanted to, you know, make that known. I have never, in all those years, have I ever felt like there was a traffic problem going down Holcomb Road. At times, it was, you know, a busy, somewhat busy, but in looking at the traffic study and looking at the numbers, I was actually really surprised that it was as few as it was. I was expecting it to be more. So, I was pleasantly surprised that there was only around 90 additional trips in the morning, and then similar in the afternoon during the rush hour time. So, that was, that was, I was happy to see that. I think it's speculative that, that development would create a burdensome traffic problem. I prefer just to rely on the proven testing of the, the traffic studies to make decisions on annexations, rather than, you know, my own or someone else's guess or speculation that there's going to be a big problem. So, I'm, I'm looking at the criteria and the, what, the tests that have been done, and am satisfied, as far as the transportation's concerned. I, I also think that Oregon City has been trying to catch up for a long time, or for, in the last couple of years, to the, the housing market problem that we've had since the recession this last, since like 2008, when construction was practically stopped. And, and I was in a meeting recently that, where a county employee said that there are 6,000 people on the county waitlist looking for housing. And, you know, I suppose that that's for any kind of housing, from, from affordable housing to whatever, but that's a lot of people, and that's countywide, not just, just citywide, just to note that. But, so there's a need there. There's a need, and I know this isn't a development application, and I want to stay focused on, on the annexation, but I, I just believe that staff has done a really great job of addressing all the criteria, and I am generally in support of this. But I, I have listened to, I listened to the meetings on the, all the videos, and I listened to the comments from the people, and I am convinced that the problems will be mitigated because of the condition that was, that was placed on the planning, what am I trying to say?
The annexation before development occurs.
Right. So, it, that, that satisfies me.
Mr. Geisman.
I did want to note one thing that you disclosed, that you, you live across the street, and just wanted to make sure if anybody has any concerns about bias or conflict of interest, there's an opportunity for anybody in the audience to question whether there's a concern. I don't see any, so I just wanted to.
And then, just one more additional thing. The number of housing, the 6,000, is new information, so that could not be part of your consideration for your determination.
I'm sorry.
So, that would be not accepted in the record.
Commissioner Shaw.
You know, it's interesting, the, the same people that complained to me about $400,000 houses are the same ones that are complaining about the annexation. So, we have to realize it's a supply and demand, and that's what's going on right now. The applicant here has met all the criteria. You know, that's, and also, they supplied the transportation impact analysis. They've done all of their due diligence on this, and the annexation factors are all met. It's, the comprehensive plan met. And this has been vetted through the planning commission extensively. It's been vetted through staff. We've had the best consultants on this. And I agree with Commissioner I. We just have to make sure that the conditions are, are met upon the annexation, so.
So, my comments will be fairly brief. One, Mr. Turway, does the alternate mobility study, could that have any impact on a, a future development at this site?
Yes. So, development cannot occur until that's completed, adopted, and then they would do a proportional share of improvements associated with those intersections they're impacting.
So, just, just a little bit of history to see how long it takes things to happen. I graduated high school in 1979. So, this has been in the works since I graduated from high school. So, I, I think it's a, one of the reasons we have such a housing crisis in the Portland metropolitan area is because of the UGB. Not only because of the UGB, but because trying to bring stuff inside cities after they're inside the UGB runs into so much angst from the communities that it's been very difficult to do. And now, we hear people complaining about the fact that you can't get an apartment, that you can't find a house to buy. We have to continue to build housing units in Oregon City, just like we're going to have to in, in most other cities. I mean, you know, there are a few places, like Gladstone, that are pretty much built out. They're not, they don't have much place to go. But Oregon City, along with Happy Valley and Wilsonville, are going to be the cities that are going to absorb some of that stuff that's outside the city of Portland. And the only thing we can do is do the best job that we can in planning for and making sure that those developments are, are quality and, and fit our community's values. And I don't listen to the planning commission meetings for a specific reason, because I want the planning commission to do their job, and I don't want to be influenced by any of that until it becomes part of the planning commission's decision and record, and then I will read all that stuff. But I don't want to be, you know, observing that, that system twice. So, I try not to, to get involved in that. The last thing I'll say is that, no matter who the applicant is, that the folks who build our houses and our buildings and our businesses are just as much contributing members of our society as anyone else. I was in the construction industry for 25 years, and I've worked in almost every building in Portland at one time or another that wasn't a residence. So, we can't classify a group of people as doing something evil because they're doing something that, that, that a city might need. So, I want to be clear that, you know, every person, every link in the chain has a place, and without it, you know, we aren't pulling the wagon down the road. So, we, I haven't seen anything that would lead me to, to oppose either the annexation or the zone change. So, at that point, unless there's further discussion, I take a motion.
Are we going to continue, or how are we going to do that?
I think what, what we'd be looking for would be a, a motion to approve or deny, assuming it's an approval, move to a, tentatively approve and ask direct staff to bring back a
Findings.
Findings for your approval.
Yes.
Okay.
What Bill said.
I, I move that, I'm looking at this motion here.
Tentative approval of?
I move for a tentative decision approving annexation 16-0004 and ZC 16-0001, and continuing the public hearing to a date cer-
The matter. It says "public hearing" in there, but it should be the continuing matter.
I'm sorry. Continuing the matter to the date certain of April 19, 2017, at which time staff will present findings memorializing the commission's decision, and if approved, an ordinance for first reading.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner I, seconded by Commissioner Mengeleberg. Is any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner I?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So, I'm guessing most of the room was here for that? Yes, no? Let's, let's take three minutes.
Thank you.
That's an issue between you and him. Got nothing to do with that. Okay, so, moving on, we are at General Business, PC 17-030, second reading of ordinance 17-1031003, annexation of 51.41 acres east of Beaver Creek Road, annexation file AN 16-003. Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. The city commission approved the first reading of this ordinance on March 15th. We recommend that the city commission approve the second reading.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mengeleberg, seconded by Commissioner I, Mr. Geisman.
Ordinance number 17-1003, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City, approving an annexation proposal number AN-116-003, and approving the annexation of certain property located on South Beaver Creek Road, including Beaver Creek Road right away to the city of Oregon City.
Further discussion? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner I?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So, PC 17-031, second reading of ordinance 17-1004, annexation of 63.82 acres east of Beaver Creek Road. Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. The city commission approved the first reading of this on March 15th. This is for the northern portion of the property. The staff recommends the city commission approve the second reading of this ordinance.
Motion?
Move to approve second reading, 17-1004.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner I, Mr. Geisman.
Ordinance number 17-1004, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City, approving annexation proposal number AN-16-003, and approving the annexation of certain property located on South Beaver Creek Road to the city of Oregon City with a delayed effective in the state.
Further discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner I?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Okay. Onto the consent agenda. Anybody have anything they need to pull from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I hear a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Mengeleberg. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner I?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. And we're off to the races. Hey, where are our communications?
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Commissioners. I'll start tonight's communications with an update from John Lewis on South End Road. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Just wanted to give you an update because there's been a lot of interest in South End Road, so, obviously, the South End Road, the hill portion of the road between South Second and the top of the hill, has seen some grade changes. What we've been calling grade changes, if you notice the electronic reader board signs along the top and the bottom of the hill, we're calling them grade changes. There are low, low-set slides that just are moving. I think in the worst case, we're seeing about two inches of vertical movement, about three inches of horizontal movement. You've seen it in the cracking of the roadway there, the pavement, and it's encroaching more than we've seen in the past into the downhill lane as well. So, we are concerned about it. I just want to remind you that that section of the road has not transferred jurisdiction, so it's a county road, but we, obviously, it serves the city's interests, so we're keeping a close eye on that, as well as the county. So, they've hired a consultant. We, we spoke to an agent of the consultant, Brent Black, with Landside Technologies. He has done an, an initial geotechnical analysis, or reconnaissance, not an analysis, and he's recommending quite a bit more work on that. There's probably some temporary solutions that could happen with making, ensuring that the pavement isn't a driving hazard. So, we'll probably see some repairs. We didn't get a specific timeline, but the county sounded like they really wanted to move on that pretty quickly. So, there's actually seven slide areas along this stretch of road. It's about 1,100 feet of roadway where, really, that uphill outbound travel lane is kind of most impacted. It's, it's all related to wet weather, so, like the rest of the slides that we've seen in Oregon City, is similar. Drainage is saturating that outer slope, and there's some question about how that material was compacted, you know, created when the road was originally built, maybe some consolidation going there. We've seen this in the past, so, the, the opinion, without the analysis, is that these are slow creeping slides that aren't going to have catastrophic failure. They're more, you know, we just have to monitor, maybe fill them back in from time to time, and that's going to be the short-term approach. The, the consultant currently thinks there's three methods to pursue on this. One's what they call a deep patch, where they take maybe five feet of the road section out, deep, five feet deep, patch that back. That may get us a- That may get us a few years, but we're really kind of looking longer term at that, at some kind of a wall, and really the, the most expensive option would be something similar to what we've reported to you in the, in the more, more recent past, which is similar to the wall that's being built up near Berry Hill Apartments, the soldier pile wall with some tiebacks. Very expensive, but at the same time, I think the city needs to start thinking, and the county is thinking, obviously, about, you know, that serves us, we've got the South End Concept Plan, you know, do we need something that maybe has a little more width that maybe we can allow pedestrians on? So in the future, we're going to continue that conversation with them. Obviously, if we wanted something a little more robust than what they could do for just temporary repair, we may need to start talking about jurisdictional transfer and possibly even contribution to that. So that's early, I just want to plant that little seed to give you something to think about. But in the meantime, we're going to keep our signs up there on a temporary basis, and the county is looking at a speed order to reduce the speed on South End Road from what it is today, which I think is 35, 30 or 35 to 25. So that'll be another thing, those will be some other signs that we'll put in place. So that's it.
So I would say that, the one thing I would say, will never be any cheaper to build than today.
Oh, I would agree with you on that.
So.
A couple-
Commissioners, sorry, you didn't push your button. Commissioner Shaw?
Are we limiting truck traffic there at all?
It is, it is posted at 13 tons. Interesting discussion about that because it's also been an emergency route for South End, or I mean for 99E. So we've got a little, we've got another stakeholder is how we kind of see it, in that the state at times, and we've, it's happened pretty regularly, had to close 99E. It just happened a weekend ago when they had the accident at 99E and South End, where they had to close that section and they detoured traffic onto, on South End and South End Hill. So it's posted 13-ton limit, but we know when those kind of incidents happen, it happens, Jim might be able to speak to whether or not we patrol that, but the assumption is we are, we are patrolling that. I just, Jim's having a landslide over there, I think. Anyway, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Jim, but I, I understand that they're, they're patrolling now.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Mengeleberg?
A couple of related questions, comments. One is, thank you for the update on the pothole patching, it's noticeable, and I appreciate your team's good work on getting ahead of that after the damage that the storms have created. And also wanted to get an update on what's happening with Trillium Park Drive and what the long-term game plan is there.
Where?
Trillium Park.
Trillium Park, okay. Well, first of all, thanks, William, for the comments, but I had nothing to do with that pothole. The crew was all over it early on, and so I, I didn't actually even get to make the call to tell them what you reported, but it was done this morning on my way in, so I didn't have to mess with, mess with that. So they're doing a good job with that. Trillium Park, it has slowed, we're still measuring with survey monumentation and we're, we've installed an inclinometer, so our geotechnical engineer's still keeping an eye on it. The sewer line and stormwater line continue to function, we're again monitoring those as well. And the water line, we actually, you know, the water, the water, there was a water line break that happened early on in the event, and we were pretty sure that the slide was pulling apart our water line, and, but yet we hadn't dug it up, so we dug it up just a day or two ago, two days ago, and found that it wasn't a broken pipe, it was really just the pipe had pulled out of the joint. So at the joint, as we suspected, that ground movement kind of pulled the water line apart, and so it was, in our opinion, it's the ground movement that created the separation pipe. So with that, we've hardened, we've kind of hard fenced on either end of that. The, the, the plan would be to just continue to monitor that, or obviously don't intend to put the water line back together. We think we can serve that area without putting that back together, continuing to monitor the sewer. There is questions about, you know, do we invest in the transportation system to allow that connection to go back in place, or do we something, do something more permanent to close it? Yet to be determined.
Thank you.
Next, we have an update from Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. I am pleased to announce that we are finalizing an intergovernmental agreement with Metro to allow us to have a $100,000 grant to implement a project for our housing in Oregon City. So we will identify opportunities for additional housing, a variety of housing types within Oregon City, and also a project to look at removal of barriers to implement that housing. And so you'll see that roll over, roll out over the next year. You'll probably see some code amendments that'll come up to you through legislative application.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have an update from Library Director Cole.
Oh, Mo still exists. Wow. Gosh, hold like three months without hearing from Mo.
I know you were asking. So, good evening, Commissioner and Mayor. So I was doing statistics, as I do at the first of every month, and I had a statistic pop-up that I just thought you would really enjoy hearing. We do a door count, and while we were in the Carnegie, our average was about 15,500 a month, which is, you know, not bad considering how small it was, right? And then since we've been in the addition with the full building, we've had a couple months of 30,000, which is amazing. March was 36,822 people.
Wow.
My goodness. So I thought you'd really enjoy hearing that. We, all the statistics are up in a good way, we're checking out more items, we're obviously doing way more programs, it's just crazy there, we had like 38 children's programs and, and 12 adult programs in the month of March. So just so you know, we are putting taxpayers' money to good work over there, we are working really hard, and people are coming to that library and getting lots of good feedback on it.
Awesome, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mo. Great job.
Just a couple of reminders, the groundbreaking ceremony for the Industrial Technical Center is tomorrow, April 6, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Oregon City campus, so if you have the opportunity to come out and be a part of that event, I'm sure they'd love to have you.
It's outdoor, dress appropriately.
The county, State of the County address is on Monday, April 17, at the Public Services Building from 6:30 to 7:30, and it will, they'll take several questions from social media and via email, so feel free to submit any questions you have of our county commissioners. And then last, we have the 2017 through 2019 goals and priorities that the commission worked on, starting in January, so we have hard copy booklets available if you'd like one. The goals are also on the city's website under the City Commission webpage, so if any commissioners are, are interested in hard copy, we have those available for you. And that concludes my updates for tonight.
Who wants to go?
I have nothing to report.
I will.
Of course you will.
I just want to say thank you to Planning, especially for the new notice signs, they're beautiful, and I know there's been some complaints about the signs and, and I'm, it's a wonderful addition, so I really appreciate that. I've been just kind of running around, getting educated, all kinds of different places, so-
Like Mexico?
I went, Mark Meek had an Affordable Housing Town Hall that I attended, that was very, very informational. I did attend the State of the City luncheon and heard all about Oregon City by Mayor Dan Holliday. Also attended, Metro had like a regional educational opportunity for newly elected officials out at the zoo a couple of weeks ago, and that was super helpful. So I attended that and learned about the, like, the four main areas that Metro is involved in, I mean, I pretty much knew that, but it was just great to hear from them exactly what they, what they do. Let's see, oh, and I also met with new county commissioner Sonia Fisher, just to, basically to get to know her and continue working with the county on developing relationships, good relationships. So that was great. And then I also attended the Clarkamas Cities Dinner, Association Dinner, and Secretary of State Dennis Richardson was there, speaking on what he does for all of us.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Well-
That's it.
-most of the same stuff here, State of the City, great job, Mayor.
Sure.
And did attend Mark Meek's Affordable Housing seminar there, and that was enlightening with the two individuals he's had for the, you know, the consultancy brought with him And did get to speak to Mr. Richardson at the county's dinner there, that was pretty cool. So OCBA, CIC toured the Parks Department building that is unoccupiable, is that a good word?
Do we invest in it?
Unoccupiable. Yeah, so it's red tag, you can't use it. So anyway, we toured that yesterday with Representative, Commissioner Mengeleberg, so. One thing I did too was I, I dropped into the Oregon City Parks Foundation meeting the other night, and there's a lively group there, and Mr. Gifford's part of that, and I tell you what, there's, there's a lot of activity there, they're doing a great job, and especially now that the pop cans went up to 10 cents apiece now, so that was quite a coup, you know, you go out and you start, you start this when it's a nickel, and nobody cares about it, you know, can I put one of these in your, your office or something? Oh, sure, yeah, those things are a nickel and stuff, so little did you know, and now everybody, it's gone up to 10 cents and everybody says, you know, and you already set it up already, so they're still using them, you know, so if you tried to go out and do that now at 10 cents, you may not have gotten as much traction. I know, I know. So that is kind of it.
Okay. So I had the Metro Mayor's meeting, our monthly meeting over at Hayden's Grill in Twallington. You know, we talked about, we debriefed the, the procedure, the, the meeting we had down at the state legislature, talked about, you know, the different legislative positions that we have. Two weeks ago, Monday, I met, went into Portland and met with Mayor Wheeler, talked about the kinds of things that we can work with Portland on, including, I brought him a, a copy of the Lamp Falls Legacy Project document, and he was really excited going through that. So just looking to rebuild and continue to build on the relationships we have with Portland because obviously there is a 600-pound gorilla in the room when it comes to the legislature, so us having a good working relationship with the city of Portland, I feel is important. And I found him to be, you know, a, a smart guy, was working hard for his community, and one of the things, and I wrote an op-ed about this, but one of the things that really struck me was that he doesn't use the ceremonial mayor's office in, in Portland City Hall, he's back in the bullpen with, with the rest of his folks, he doesn't want to be separated from, he wants to be part of the team, and that, that really impressed me is, you know, being important. I went to the Clarkamas Cities Dinner as well, that was, it's always fun when you can, you know, eat in the middle of 300 Harleys, so. And beyond that, I've had a, a couple of other meetings, went to the OCBA luncheon as well, heard from another development consultant, which was an interesting conversation. Beyond that, that's about it for me. Oh, there is one other thing, is it okay to talk about the personnel change?
Which one?
Yours?
Yeah.
So as of Friday, and this is inside baseball for some of you, but as of Friday, Katie Durfee is leaving the City of Oregon City to go to work for County Insurance, CIS.
City, county.
So, you know, Katie's been with us for quite a while, she's done a great job, she's always really, really nice and helpful to me. I'm the worst guy in the world to call up and say, hey, can you text me an email address or text me a phone number? And between her and Katie Riggs, you know, just pops up on my phone, so I certainly appreciate the work she's done and we wish her all the luck in the world moving forward in her new position. With that, unless there's anything for the, go to the order, we're adjourned.